Good morning and welcome to the workshop for Monday, January 14th. I think we'll start the meeting this morning with any comments that the city manager might have to make.
Mr. Mayor, Portem, you mean you don't want to start the city budget discussion?
No, we can, but a lot of times you've got an update.
Oh, well, I do have some comments that I want to make towards the end of the meeting about legislative procedures, but it would be good to have the balance of the council here when we do that. So it's your pleasure.
Nope, that's fine. We'll move on then to the first item on the agenda for the city budget.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Scott Sanders will kick it off.
Good morning, Mayor Portem, City Council. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. It is the budget season, so I have a topic for you this morning dealing with the operating budget. This is the general fund and road use tax funds that support the general operations, the non-enterprise, if you will. And so as the timeline that was presented to you a few weeks ago indicates, we wanted to get out in front with the operating discussion this morning and then allow the capital discussion to occur at the next council workshop and then the enterprise funds thereafter in case there is any questions or changes that the council may desire on the operating side. So I just have a couple of slides for you this morning, maybe. There we go. I've broken down the Finance Department budget officers have helped me break down projections of the major revenue sources in the operating funds as well as the major expenditures. So that's what this presentation is really honed in on. The valuations are what drives the property taxes for city governments in Iowa. And we really had this discussion a year ago with what we were seeing occur with valuations in the city of Des Moines. And so I've broken down for you here the valuation that is essentially available for our operating levies. And you can see that in fiscal year 11, we were just at 6.4 billion in valuation. This is the taxable valuation. And for 2012, that did increase to just under 6.6 billion. And so the budget cycle that we resolved a year ago was for fiscal year 13 and 14. That's the two-year cycle. Anticipating that in 13, it would go down, which it did, to about 6.4 billion. And an increased recovery, if you will, in fiscal year 14, back to about the level we were in fiscal year 12. And these are the official numbers, actually. So we know now that we can deal with about 6.6 billion in valuation for our fiscal year 14 budget that's before you. And so again, this was anticipated. There's increases due to new construction and the residential rollback and the decreases dealing quite a bit with the loss of commercial valuation due to revaluing and requests by property owners to reduce their values pretty significantly.
Scott, just to put it in perspective, that decline that you see from FY '12 to FY '13 is fairly unusual. Typically, you would see an increase. So the fact that it went down so dramatically over that one-year period means that we've begun to recover a little bit, but we're not back up where we would have typically been had things been going along.
That's exactly right. If I had taken this chart backwards and time further, you would see 2%, 2.5% growth in valuations historically on that.
So last year, when we looked at the two-year budget then, Scott, did we have the same forecast? It hasn't changed at all, then, is what you're saying?
The forecast, you know, we really honed in on 14. We knew that 13 was going to dip, but the key was to resolve 14 as well. And the final value for 14 was like 17 or 18 million dollars off out of 6.6 billion. So we had pretty good numbers coming from the county and from our own staff resolving that, so not a change at all there. And quite frankly, the fiscal year 13 is what prompted the rate increase, the tax rate discussions that we went through as well, so to fill that gap.
So is this a net assessment for operating purposes? Because I think for capital purposes, you have a different assessment.
That's right. For the debt service piece, the debt service levy is applied against TIF valuations as well. So what you're looking at here is the valuations in the city when you peel off the TIF, which is not available to the operating funds.
Very good question.
Another major source of revenue is our road use tax. And so it's hovered around 19 million dollars the last three years. It's fairly flat, you can tell there. The increase that you're seeing in fiscal year eight through 10 was some of the changes that the state legislature met, made in dealing with additional fees, registration fees and things of that nature. So even with those positive changes, the revenue source has been pretty flat, but solid, stable, and that's very helpful. Another revenue source that gets a lot of discussion is the franchise fees. And what the budget staff have done here is actually split out for us the cable, TV, the electric, and the gas separately because there is a dynamic that's going on here with the gas portion in the middle that's worth spending a minute or two on. The price of gas per unit has come down historically for the last six or seven years even. What we also had was some mild winters, and that actually exaggerates the pricing as well. If there's less use of natural gas, then the pricing comes down, and the opposite is true. And when a lot of gas is being, natural gas is being used for cold winters, the price continues to go up. So there's kind of a snowball effect either direction. And so what you've seen is the gas revenues that we take in annually come down quite a bit since 2008. We think we've hit bottom with one of the most mild winters we've had just a couple of years ago. So we've kind of stabilized now, hopefully plateaued. So those revenue streams that I just mentioned, first of all, was the taxes. These are the revenue dollars compared to the fiscal year 12 actuals, the original 13 budget, and what we have right now for our projected 14 budget. The taxes, the road use, I've spoken about, the franchise fees. Then I've added a few others just for reference points. The hotel motel tax you'll see in fiscal year 12 was quite healthy, but that is higher than the norm for fiscal year 12, and we believe that is due pretty closely to the federal elections and the additional attention and hotel stays that Des Moines had during the elections. The ambulance fee is pretty stable. And another point on here that I've added is the airport police reimbursement. This is a mechanism that has changed since 2011. When the airport became an authority, their police protection costs were moved to the city, whereas before it was in the enterprise fund. There was a separate enterprise fund just for airport. Now what we need to be able to show is 2012 moving forward is the cost of the police in the general fund, but we also get a revenue stream from the airport. So it's not a net cost to the city, but we have to show it differently now. Instead of in the enterprise fund, it's now being shown in the general fund, just the police protection at the airport. Fiscal year 12 was a partial year that we had to do that accounting mechanism. That's why you see only the 1.3 million in cost. The real cost annually is about 2.3 million for that police protection at the airport. So you see it stabilize then for 13 and 14 and moving forward as well. So to a degree, it artificially inflates our fiscal year 13 and 14 budgets at no net cost to the city. Parking fines are stable. Building permits have recovered a little bit since 2012. And then we have a one-time event, that prepayment from UPS agreement out the airport. Again, this is a situation where we artificially had to inflate both the revenues and the expenses to no net gain or loss, so to speak. It truly is an advantage to have those funds, but the decision was made to let those 4.6 million go to the benefit of the parking system to refinance some high-interest rate debt, if you recall, about a year ago. And so those funds were loaned to the parking system and are being paid back to the general fund at about 400,000 a year. So there's a benefit of 400,000 a year to the general fund as opposed to just a 4.6 million upfront.
Scott, on your second line, what's our UTF?
That's the road use tax, sorry, the road use tax fund.
Where would the, where's the revenue from the speeding cameras and red light cameras fall into this?
Those will go under other at this point, and those are getting adjusted at the amended budget. What we've got in place is an opportunity to, we originally budget for what we have in costs associated with the red light camera and the speeding tickets, plus the 200,000 that the council committed to a year ago to help resolve the budget, the two-year cycle. And then what we'll do each year at the amended budget is look at what has the past six months given us in collections and then what risks do we have legislatively for a change that could zero it out technically? And we'll make adjustments with each amended budget to show the additional revenue that's expected. It's the safest way to keep just one-time revenues and one-time expenses.
Scott, on your previous slide, the 50% reduction in the, from the high to the low on the gas, there's a combination, I think, of usage, the weather, and the price of gas has gone down drastically from what it was prior years.
That's exactly right. And so we anticipate moving forward that the price will stay about the same, but that we'll have more normal winters with some cold weather, so the usage would go up.
Scott, can you go back to that slide that you just left that talked about the revenue, the last item, other? You mentioned in response to Skip's question, what else is in that other category?
Let's see. Okay, so this is on the revenue side. We have everything in there that would deal with staff that are associated with capital, in which case, you know, like engineering works on capital. So their expenses are in the operating fund, but we need to transfer capital funds to the general fund. Those transfers in are considered a revenue. So what you're going to find is probably 80%, if not more, that other line item is transfers, in this case, coming in, but you'll see on expenses, some of the transfers do go out. And that's the most difficult, admittedly, that's the most difficult part to illustrate is the transfers because most of the time, it's a net zero, if you will, impact to the operating fund.
So 80% is, fits that?
And I can get you more detail on that.
No, that's fine. I just was trying to get a ballpark.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident that over 80% of that other category is transfers coming and going.
Okay.
So similarly, on the expenditure side, this should be no surprise to you that as a city government, we are a service organization, and the highest cost is clearly the employee cost. We're about, I think that's about 77% of our budget is tied to the people that provide the services to the citizens in Des Moines. We have 6 million in vehicle costs annually. That only has a very small piece of it for replacement. I believe a million dollars of that 6.2 is for emergency replacement of vehicles. We do have a separate capital budget that, where we finance vehicles through our leasing arrangements and even larger vehicles over a long time, so that the replacement of vehicles is in the capital. This is really the maintenance of vehicles. Street lights and signals, the 3.3 million there is nearly all the electrical costs with a little bit of replacement of the streetlight system. The airport police unit that I mentioned before, you'll see those numbers are almost identical to the revenue sides, again, a net zero impact to the city's operating fund. This is just showing the expenditures of that, the one-time, similar to the revenues for the UPS agreement prepayment. This was on the expense side. This is shown as a loan to the parking. And then we also have, I tried to break out some more of the other category. We have a debt payment out of the general fund that finished in 2012 and was anticipated, obviously, with the schedule to complete in '12. So there are zeros for '13 and '14 there. And again, transfers will make up, actually in this case, probably 90%, if not more, of the other category.
Can you go back up to the employee line, Scott?
Yes.
And give a little more detail on that?
Absolutely.
Is that, the increase there, is that due to benefits that have been negotiated, increase in salaries, insurance, pensions?
It shows the full cost of employees, so it is the wages, salaries, health, pensions, pretty much anything associated with a benefit level. And so the major movements there are the negotiations with the labor unions on the wages and health, which includes, you know, a tremendous improvement on health contributions and keeping the wage increases modest. If you want, I can switch over to a projection that shows historically how in the fiscal year 13, you know, we had some excellent conversations with the unions and came to this call here.
Okay.
Where you're seeing the 1.75s and the 2%. And I know James has had some, you know, further discussions for the contracts that need to be renewed and has had some encouraging numbers there as well.
But the number of employees is unchanged?
Well, the number of employees for projected 14 were not changing.
Correct.
Obviously, we made the-
Did it back in '13.
Right. We did it back in '13 with just like two or three positions that still need to change.
Okay.
So yes, that's correct. So this is the wage side of it, and then we can go back to the PowerPoint. Legislatively, there's another topic on today's agenda. I think they'll cover this, but the pension funds are a huge variable in the cost of employees. You know, we're looking at 6% increases with IPRs and probably about 17% increases on the 411 system. So what we've got here, what you see from the fiscal year 12, the 124 million to fiscal year 13, that's only about a 2%. Actually, it's a little less than a 2% increase to employee costs. So I would hope that that would be considered a success, keeping that cost at less than 2% increase. The fiscal year 14 is just over 3% anticipated, again, with 17%.
Let me just add, I mean, this is a really critical point because I think what the council's done in recent years with the help of HR is to really manage employee costs pretty well. The table that Scott had a moment ago that showed the 1% or 2% increases in union contracts is evidence of that. The increases you see here, to a large extent, are employee costs that are beyond your control, which are going to be pension caused. That's where the, that's where the increase is coming.
Okay.
Not all of it, obviously, 2% on the, on numbers this big is going to produce an increase, but beyond that, it's those other costs that we don't really directly control.
Scott, looking at this slide and the previous slide, it shows for '13 about a $2 million surplus, but then in '14, you're projecting about a $700,000 deficit. Do you hold the money from '13 over to '14 then?
Yeah, it can be, but it's been identified in the revised '13 for like losses and revenues due to the gas and electric franchise and other needs within the general fund. So if you were to ask me today where I thought fiscal year 13 might end up in a surplus situation, I don't see us having the 2 million making it through to the end of June. We'll probably have more like a $1 million surplus by June of this coming year.
So what do we do when we come to '14 and there's a $700,000 deficit?
Let's do that math real quick because maybe I did something wrong. We've got revenues of 172,180 and expenses of 171, so this-
I'm sorry.
That's right. I want to make sure we're on. So we've actually got a $300,000 surplus budgeted for '14. And if you recall, this is pretty amazing, actually, because there's 250 active line items, types of expenses, and about the same on the revenue side. And we had some ups and downs with what our projections were, but when you net that all out, we did come up with a, there is a $300,000 net surplus for fiscal year 14. Now, we have a 10, as a city, we have a 10% fund balance policy, 10% of annual expenditures. And so with those expenditures growing at about $4 million, a little more than $4 million, we really should be putting about 400,000 of additional fund balance aside. And so that 300,000, I'm not going to argue about 100,000, to be honest with you, on a $170 million budget because hopefully we can outperform on the expense side and hopefully our revenues were conservative enough that we can get it above 400,000 by the end of fiscal year 14. So this was the key, the discussion from several weeks ago when finance was feeling more and more comfortable that we, the projections were showing us a balanced budget. These are the numbers behind that. The timeline, again, we've already addressed fiscal year 12 results. This is a discussion on the major revenues and expenditures for the operating fund. We have the capital, which is associated with the debt service levy, and then the enterprise funds. We anticipate having the actual budget booked for you, the two-inch binder and book, first week in February. So that'll have essentially all the line items, all the way down to the smallest amount of detail.
And when, when is it that we have to put the public notice out in order to take action on the 25th?
There's like a 10-day notice, I believe, that has to be published. So we will, we will ask for any, you know, changes in early February, probably around the 15th.
Okay. I was thinking it was longer than that, so I-
No.
So we, okay.
Now, we have until March 15th. So what we always do is reserve that March meeting for any last-minute concerns or changes. So we would still anticipate having the February 25th council meeting budget approval, but we've left ourselves-
Some room.
-an opportunity for one additional meeting, if need be.
All right, Scott, thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Halle, Skip, Bob?
I have a quick observation, if I could. Would you go back two slides, Scott? And I know that the manager and Scott made this point, but I just look at this chart and think how important it is that, you know, we manage those employee relationships well. If you look at '12, just two years ago, our employee costs were 124 out of total expenditures of 173. Both those numbers got a lot closer, 131 to 171. And as a percentage, for as good as our contracts have been, because of retirement and other things, it eats it up. And if we don't manage that well, you know, we're not too many years away from our employee cost eating the entire budget. And every year, that grows as a percentage when you factor in the, you know, the retirement cost of our people especially. And, you know, it got narrower by $8,000, $9,000 over a two-year period. We went from a 50,000, 50 cushion to about 40 cushion.
Just to add to that, if I could, Mr. Coleman, council members, that, the point you're making is the reason why, if you look back over time, the thing that we've had to do, in most cases reluctantly, is reduce employees. And I've made the point many times recently, in the last year or two, that in the last 10 years, we've cut over 300 employees from our permanent payroll. And that's, that's evidence of the fact that employee costs are such a large part of what we spend. And if you want to control the future of our budget, you really have to address those costs, which, by the way, and I know the point's been made, but it's a really critical point that this council has made great decisions with the help of HR and others to work very well with our collective bargaining units and I think effectively have controlled those costs in terms of the things that you directly control. And that's, all of those actions have been aimed at trying to employ, impact that line in a way that you can manage going forward. But you're right, that will continue to be, in terms of our budget and controlling costs, how you manage employee costs will continue to be the single biggest thing that we can do to manage our finances.
When we privatize a job, where is, where are those expenditures reflected? Are those in the CIP then?
Well, it depends.
Let's use mowing, mowing of turf and parks and rec.
Right. And so it drops down into the contracts portion, the costs do. So you'll see a savings, if you will, on the employee side with no longer having the employees, but then you'll, you'll see a cost show up on the contracting. And the analysis is always making sure that the cost on the contracts is less than what we were spending on our, in our own employee costs.
Scott, if we were comparing apples to apples, which we don't, so.
And so on here, where would those contract costs appear?
That would have been under other, since the contracting has not risen to the level of major expense, so.
Had we not contracted out or eliminated those jobs, the employee cost would just be increasing far, far more dramatically.
Yep.
What's the rate of increase? I mean, you compare the rate of increase in employee costs versus the rate of increase in contract costs.
Any other questions, comments, statements, clarifications? Scott, thank you. All right. Mr. Manager, let's move over to the Housing Services Budget Update.
Okay. Mr. Doug Romig's got the show there.
Good morning. Mayor County, Members of the City Council, Doug Romig, Housing Services Director. This is just an update on where the Housing Services Department is, we forecast into our future. Just a reminder about the clients that we serve. We currently are serving between our Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Rental Assistance Program and our Public Housing Program, about 3,500 households. Within that, we have 1,500 households with children, 1,200 that have a person that is non-elderly but disabled, and we serve 700 seniors, or 700 households have a senior living in there, for a total of over 7,300 individuals that we serve throughout the agency. The average annual household income is about $11,000 within those households, and we have over 5,100 families on our waiting list for both Section 8 assistance and public housing. I do want to point out just a couple of points. The programs that we serve provide a critical need within our community, as shown above. We do serve people that are disabled, and some of those individuals with disabilities have limited opportunities for earning income. Obviously, most of our elderly citizens are on fixed income, whether it's a pension or social security due to their time in the workforce. And then some of the families we serve are just life circumstances, unfortunately, have limited earning income opportunities or just they're poor. To sort of point out some of the things that we do, we also have a family self-sufficiency program, and I want to highlight three individuals that went through our program last year. We had a gentleman by the name of Brian that was hoping to start his own business using his construction background. He went through our program, took some educational classes- He went through our program, took some educational classes, um, took some financial, uh, classes through our FSS program, uh, was unable to sustain self-employment, but went back and got some more training, realizing that he needed to improve his marketability within the workforce. And he's now earning, uh, $20 an hour working at Titan Tire. So he's been successful in increasing his earnings, and that reduces the amount of subsidy that we provide for him in his housing as he works for economic self-sufficiency. Another family, Jessica was a single mother of three that was on welfare assistance when she started with us in 2009. She went through the cosmetology program, cosmetology program, and is now employed full-time at Great Clips. She is our first Section 8 person that is using her voucher towards homeownership. And this past year, uh, she bought a three-bedroom home on the south side of Des Moines and is again working towards economic self-sufficiency and is no longer on any type of welfare assistance, but she is receiving a small housing assistance payment through her Section 8 voucher homeownership program. And the third person is Emil, who's a gentleman that's legally blind. He came to us earning about $20,000 working for the IRS. His goal was to establish a retirement fund, increase his savings, and, um, reach economic self-sufficiency, and he succeeded in that. Over the course of time, he doubled his income. He is no longer on our program. He's graduated and has reached economic self-sufficiency. So I wanted to spell some of the perceptions of some of the clients that we serve. Uh, you know, we have people that have, are struggling economically, but, um, you know, they're, they bring value to the community, um, and they strive to improve their personal life. One of the other key points moving forward is that we do have funding silos. The way we're funded, we're solely funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through federal grants and awards, um, with the exception of public housing where we do generate some rental income. But our funding silos, we have our public housing program, our Section 8 rental assistance program, our Section 8 administration, and then our central office operations, for a total operating budget of about $22 million. Uh, the Section 8 rental assistance is the largest portion of that, of just under $17 million, uh, that we put into the community to provide, uh, rent assistance for low-income qualified families throughout Polk County. Our budget shortfalls over the last two fiscal years and then projection for FY14 has shown up above, uh, just under 300,000 in FY12, just under 450 in 13, and we're projecting around 400,000 in FY14. The budget actions we have taken to date and are being recommended has sustained tenant services. These have been support staff and administrative reductions, um, so we have not minimized or reduced services to the tenants that we're serving, but it is starting to cause, uh, some stress within the organization, uh, moving forward.
Doug, I'm sorry, can I, can I ask a quick question on that last slide? In 2012, did we have a reserve fund that is drawing down to cover these losses, or are those essentially loans from the city as this sponsoring organization? I mean, where does the money come, I mean, how, how do we cover the checks?
Yeah. Uh, for FY12, FY13, and what's recommended why, for FY14 is that we utilize our reserves to cover the fund balances moving forward. So we have utilized our reserves, uh, which are dwindling, and we do need to look to do something different moving forward, uh, which I will get into here in the near future within the presentation.
And the, and what, what did the reserves start at?
Um, we were, well, probably around FY10 and 11, we were just under a million. Now we're down to about 600,000, uh, within Section 8 and under 200,000 within public housing.
Okay.
So in FY12 and FY13, uh, reductions and changes that we made to help reduce the offset and reduce the amount of reserves that we used to carry the agency, uh, we eliminated three positions. Uh, one was an administrative, uh, division manager position. Then we had a bacon, uh, bookkeeper position and application specialist, which does our leasing. We restructured our security at Royalview Manor where we moved one of our maintenance personnel to work weekends and evenings, um, and reduced the, uh, off-duty officers' presence in the building, um, but still providing that service. We, if the council recalls, we established our workers' compensation retention fund using our development proceeds, uh, to set aside for catastrophic loss. So we weren't putting that money out of our general operating budget. And then we made some adjustments to our utility and rental subsidies where the tenants are paying a little bit more, but that allowed us to issue more vouchers to serve more families. Uh, and our revenues are generated by units, months leased. So the number of units we have leased up determines the amount of revenues that we receive for administrative support. And as indicated earlier, we do utilize our reserves to carry us moving forward. In a previous presentation, the proposed recommendations regarding the shortfall for FY14 is the diminution of five full-time positions effective June of 2013. We will have one retirement in December, uh, that we will not replace. However, uh, we will have to look to utilize our remaining shortfall within our Section 8 administration program of just under 250,000 to sustain, uh, those programs and services. We have established a Housing Services Board Ad-Hoc Committee to look at the balance of our development fund and how to best utilize those, uh, funds moving forward to support the agency and the tenants that we serve. We have a request into HUD to use some of those funds to hire a consultant to help us look at our operations and our policies to make sure we're as effective as we can be based on best practices throughout the country. And, uh, we believe we need to research opportunities to diversify our revenues since we are fully, solely funded by HUD.
Doug, could you go back and talk a little bit more about the established Housing Services Board and looking at the use of development funds? And just give us a little more history on that. Who's on that board? What are some of the things that you're looking at?
Sure. The, um, the ad hoc committee is comprised of, we have about 17 individuals. They're either current or former executive directors, a lot of the area nonprofits, or their board. So we have Jenny Cooper, Pam Carmichael, uh, from Home Inc., Lance Henning from Habitat, Russ Fraser from Anam Wim Housing, Eric Bermaneister from the Polk County Housing Trust Fund, Kathy Cahoon, who's a former city of Des Moines community development, uh, person that worked with home funds. Can't pull some of the other names.
Okay.
But, so it's a diverse group. Hallie Olson from Neighborhood Finance Corp., and then some private citizens as well that have some interest in this. Things that we've looked at and some recommendations we've sent forward already to HUD, based on the guiding principles, is we've requested to spend about $1.6 million to reach our baseline number of Section 8 vouchers that we issue. HUD, through re-benchmarking then, would, uh, carry forward the rental assistance payments and then pay those administrative fees, but we have to sort of prime the pump initially. So we're about 308 vouchers short of reaching the number of vouchers we can issue under our regulatory authority. So that'd be about a $1.6 million investment. We've submitted a grant actually on Friday to Iowa Finance Authority, uh, requesting a million dollars in home funds for their tenant-based rental assistance program, with a request to match that dollar for dollar for any award using our development funds. That's a two-year rental assistance program where we would pull people from our Section 8 waiting list, uh, of those over 4,000 families, to get them subsidized housing. So within the two years, when those funds terminated, they would have their Section 8 voucher. Other things we've looked at, um, we've looked at owning versus renting an office. Uh, we do have a homeownership program already in place. We can do some additional public housing development, uh, that meets regulatory requirements. Again, we have a baseline number of public housing units that we can build and own, about 911. So we could build another 400-plus, uh, public housing units, but there's some strategies that would have to be put in place if we wanted to pursue that because we're only getting about 84 cents on the dollar, uh, to run our public housing operation because, uh, we're not fully funded. So those are some of the things that we've talked about and discussed, um, through some brainstorming sessions. The next step with this group is to really, uh, put in a little bit more detail and submit this to HUD for their review and analysis to make sure that our interpretation of the HUD regulations, um, meet those efforts and those needs.
Would HUD allow there to be, uh, any collaboration with the other nonprofits as part of this discussion?
Um...
To save on some administrative expenses?
Limited. Uh, the, the main focus of these funds is that they have to provide direct service or support to a Section 8 or public housing client.
Okay.
Um, so we can't do grants or gifts to nonprofits for affordable housing to low-income. They have to be a Section 8 or a public housing participant in order to, for these funds to be used, which is one of the limiting factors.
Doug, let me ask, as a follow-up to all this discussion, what is the expectation of HUD when they're funding up to 84% and that's 100% of your source of funds plus rentals? Where do they think the money's going to come from?
Uh, well, they, they don't provide those, those options or those services, but I will, uh, talk a little bit about what some other housing agencies have done, um, to diversify revenues or to, um, sustain their operations outside of, uh, the federal funding as their sole source of income.
How many total units do you have now under your management?
We have about 437 public housing units, uh, five apartment complexes and about...
Okay. How, uh, what's the, are they 100% rented?
Beg your pardon?
Are they 100% rented?
We're around 98.5%, 99% lease-up. So we're doing fairly well. Uh, our Section 8 program, we're using 100% of our funds, um, but we have more vouchers we could issue if we had more money available.
Do you have any down units?
We have a few that are in, uh, we have nine within our 5H homeownership program that are actually out for bid right now to be rehabbed. Um, those bids are due back within the next week. And then there's an action on this evening to take three of our 5H homes that are in poor condition, move them into what's called a disposition category so we can sell them on the open market.
Okay, poor condition, so they're, they're not currently occupied?
Correct.
Okay, so again, how many down units do you have?
Right now, we have 10.
10. Total out of 400 and...
437.
Out of 437.
Yeah.
And you've sold the balance of them?
Yeah, we sold 28 units this year that were vacant and had been vacant and in disrepair.
That's good stuff. Why did they fall into disrepair?
Well, that started, um, about, over, a little over 10 years ago, when the, uh, action was move them into disposition. There's, there's a couple of different things. We have our disposition program where our disposition plan allows us to sell those units at 75% of fair market value to nonprofits, as long as they remain as affordable housing units for five years, or they're in our, what's our 5H homeownership program where we can sell them to low-income qualified families. At the time those programs were put in place, once they went into the disposition category, we could no longer use HUD funding to sustain them and rehab them. Um, so those units...
The fact of the matter was, a lot of those were down before the disposition was granted.
Correct.
I mean, there was...
About, I believe around 20% of those were vacant at the time the disposition was approved. And that was a combination of, uh, to be honest, that was a combination of poor maintenance practices at the time within the housing agency and reductions in federal funding. And that's been turned around. Like I said, we're at a lease-up of around 99%. By the July 1 of next year, our goal is to have everything in disposition sold, everything in our inventory fully occupied. And we're on target to...
How many do you have left, uh, through disposition, sell?
We have seven. Seven left, and then the three that we want to transfer for a total of 10.
Okay, so how many, uh, total have you sold?
Um, about 375 units.
Okay. And where does that money go?
That goes, what, I talked about the development fund, and that's what that committee was working on, is how to use those funds. So that's where we...
And that's the 12 million or...
Right.
Whatever that is today.
Yep. It's down to, you know, around 8 million. We spent 3.5 to build the 38 units at Central Iowa Shelter Services. We've used some of those funds to rehab some of our units that we've returned back into our rental inventory and, um, other capital projects for our public housing managers that...
How many people do you have on our waiting list to get into the program?
We have around 917 in public housing and over 4,000 on our Section 8 program. About 5,100 total.
So we're, we're not meeting the need, so to speak?
Correct.
Where do these people live, otherwise?
Um, well, some are doubled up, some are, uh, paying more than their, um, housing cost. Actually, one of the, we're working on our agency plan right now, and we have to identify sort of the needs within the community. And one of the items we polled from the census data, the comprehensive, uh, housing affordability strategy tab, uh, that 43% of Des Moines households that are earning 80% or less area median income are paying over 30% of their household income towards housing, and 19% are paying over 50% of their income towards housing. So a lot of this...
So if you have over 5,000 folks that are on a waiting list, one list or another?
Correct.
Are any of those homeless?
Um, not to my knowledge, um, because we have addresses, I mean, it's, well, no, I shouldn't say that. Yes, some are in the shelters because we do work with the shelter, um, and that will be sort of their point of address. Uh, we do have some preferences for homeless individuals. We have the project-based vouchers at Central Iowa Shelter, 38 units there. We have 12 units at the YMCA. And then we've established a Section 8 preference for the shelter plus care, where we've got three, uh, individuals that are in shelter plus care that will get a regular voucher, so their slot would open up, and that targets chronically homeless individuals.
So we've got 5,000 people waiting for 400 and some units.
And the 30-something, there are 3,000-plus vouchers. But it'll take us over four years to, um, get through our Section 8 waiting list, based on historical data. And that means nobody else can apply for that program until we get to that point in time.
I think that tells us a different story. Um, obviously, you're doing the best you can with what we have, but we're not meeting the need for the citizens of the city of Des Moines, and we have to figure out how to get that done.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So if you look, really, the, the crux of the problem, actually, I'm going to go back one slide real quick. If these actions are implemented, uh, when we adopt the budget, uh, we worked with the city's finance department to do a five-year forecast, and our central office and our public housing operations will actually start generating reserves again over that five year. As in Scott's presentation, as our, our structural deficit increases with the union wages and insurance and health and those other, those lines will converge again at some point in time. But we're healthy, uh, through FY18 in our projections with these actions. So again, public housing in Section 8, or, uh, public housing in our central office, which is our clerical support, our IT support, um, and our office functions, accounting, uh, those services will be sustained. So we get really to the crux of the problem within our program, and it's our Section 8 administration budget. This is currently funded at about 80% proration. Again, as I indicated, our funding is siloed, so we get about 17 million in rental assistance payment dollars, but HUD has not reduced any of the regulatory requirements that we have to provide, and they're only paying us 80 cents on the dollar. So this is our, our issue, is trying to sustain, um, our Section 8 administrative policies and programs due to the HUD regulations that we have to follow, uh, with the limited resources we have available.
Help me understand the 80%. The, the policy or, or, uh, regulation is you submit expenses and they pay 80% of it? Or is it that right now our expenses outpace the available dollars they give us by 25%?
Uh, the way it works is HUD submits their, their budget to the federal government. Congress places or approves their appropriations, and then HUD takes that information and does an across-the-board reduction nationwide, and, or proration. So if you look at this chart, which was provided in a previous slide, in FY10, we were getting 91% proration. If we were at 90%, we would sustain our operations. If we were at 100%, we would generate reserves again. Um, but at 80%, HUD is telling us that they believe it, it should cost us another half million dollars to run their Section 8 program that we provide as a service. And our shortfall is around 247,000.
Sure. This is a really critical point because what, what Doug is saying, these proration numbers are established basically by the budgetary process in, in Congress, and they're established. And what HUD is telling us is this is the portion that, of the administration costs that they will allow to be reimbursed by the, the Section 8 program. So in effect, as that number goes from 91.4% to 80%, the balance, or in FY14, 20%, needs to come from some other source. That's the mayor's question a few minutes ago. He said, "Well, what, what's the impact of this?" Well, the impact is we have to, we have to provide a way, some way or another, to fund that 20% or the program... that 20% where the program continues to go in the tank in terms of its administrative costs. And if you can't administer the program, then you can't supply the number of units that are in the program. And that's why Doug is saying this is the crux of the problem. Does that make sense?
And the likelihood of that changing is not good.
Well, and not only changing, but exing out some of these programs altogether. There's people in Congress that want to get rid of all these programs.
Yeah.
The entitlement programs, and here we have an ever-growing need. We've got 5,000 people on a waiting list. Doug's telling us here it's going to take 40 years to fill that need. I mean, what are they saying?
Yeah. Doug's got more information.
Yeah, I think we all have more information.
Not sure what I did there. Okay, so this really gets then to how do we move forward? And this is really your decision as our governing board, as the policymaking body. We can look at additional staffing reductions, but that would cause families to lose housing assistance. In order to meet the regulatory requirements, we can only handle so much of a caseload within our Section 8 management program. We could look at the general fund to provide a subsidy to make up annual federal funding shortfalls, or we could look to diversify revenues of the Housing Services Department. Some things that have been done in other agencies, some of the things that we're doing, we are looking at some regulatory waivers. A regulatory waiver allows us to appeal to HUD to say, "We want to waive this waiver because it's a burden." And that would then potentially allow us to increase our capacity to handle higher caseloads. One of the things that we're looking at right now is our utility allowance. We have to calculate whether it's gas or electric, range or stove, furnace, what type, is it an apartment, multifamily, single-family, duplex? So there's a lot of calculations. And if we can just waive that and say, "If it's a one-bedroom, it's this; if it's a two-bedroom, it's this," then we can eliminate that work, save staff three to five minutes for every client they process, and maybe increase their caseload by 50 families. We're looking at grants, short-term and long-term. That's short-term support. It doesn't provide consistent, ongoing sustainability. But we did receive a $50,000 grant from United Way for our family self-sufficiency program. As I indicated earlier, we submitted a request to IFA for a million-dollar home tenant-based rental assistance. That does have a 10% administrative fee to that, so that'd be $100,000 that we could generate if we're awarded those funds at full amount.
Is the IFA request a new one? I've not heard of this one before.
Yeah, it's, yes. I went through a training a couple of weeks ago. The grant is actually, the submittal is due today, but it's through their home program, and it's tenant-based rental assistance, and they've set aside a million dollars.
Excellent.
It'll be highly competitive, but I think we've got a good shot. City of Ames, or not the city, the Housing Authority of Ames and Oceola eliminated their programs. They turned it over to the area regional housing authorities, and they stopped providing the services. Some other housing authorities throughout the nation have turned back vouchers because they can't operate at the prorated amount, at 80%. Lincoln Housing Authority has a special designation, basically its home rule, but they've diversified their revenues by doing 1,100 mixed-income units. Their housing operation is comparable size. They have a few, they're a little bit smaller in the public housing arena and a little bit smaller in the Section 8 program than we provide, but they have over double the staff that we have within our operation. They have about 88 employees.
L-I-H-T-C is low-income housing tax credit, so they've actually become a developer the way other developers here in town do. They've developed their own tax credit units and generated revenue from that to support the program through tax credit.
Correct. Yep. And they own their own office, and they have a senior apartment in their downtown that they pulled their employees out of the first floor, and they're renting that for commercial office space, commercial lease space. And then the Eastern Iowa Region Housing Authority, they're not tied to a city, but they have 66 mixed-income units, owner-occupied office, and they have a nonprofit arm that they use as well to support their programs.
Going back to the Fund Development Ad Hoc Committee, though, has this discussion, I know that that committee was established as a result of you coming forward with purchasing a building and issues that we ran into, but have you had significant, serious discussions about this?
No, this is the next on our agenda. We were brainstorming all the ideas on how to use the funds. So our next meeting that we'll set up this month will start getting into this type of detail. Yep.
Doug, do you have any numbers that indicate the full cost to occupy different types of units across your spectrum of available opportunities? In other words, what is the all-in cost, including rent and utilities?
Yeah, we can provide that for you. It's HUD formula-based, and we've got a different breakout, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but we can provide some information and send that out.
Just off the top of your head, is it significant, the utility costs that these people pay in these units?
No. Again, well, with the Section 8 program, they rent from any private landlord. So it's whatever the general population is paying, because those units are mixed-income typically, and...
Some of those units will provide heat, for instance, maybe not electric. Some of them will provide nothing, because they'll have, each unit will have its own HVAC unit in it. So they, all the costs are on the renter.
Right. But within our program, we do have a utility allowance schedule, so we do accommodate if the utilities are included, we have an adjustment factor, or if they're paying the utilities independent. So they, we do calculate the total living expenses for that family, including rent and utilities, when we determine our subsidy.
Which brings, as we develop more units, if we do, or anybody else does, there ought to be some requirement as to what standard they build to. Because if they build to a higher standard, for instance, even in the LEED spectrum or Energy Star spectrum, some of those are very low-cost to operate. Others that have no insulation in them, nothing, are very expensive. I mean, they'll see 50, 100, $200 utility bills.
Correct.
And so it, I think, in terms of, as we start working on affordability for people that truly need it, you know, putting them in a place that their rent's cheap, but their utilities are high is sometimes doing them a big favor.
Exactly. And right now HUD does require Energy Star as a minimum. And there's trainings this month on green initiatives that will be occurring in Des Moines, as that's a big push from the federal government as well. So as we get to the end here, as far as looking at recommendations, again, as the council has seen, we have a huge demand and a huge need within our program, so we would not recommend doing additional cuts to try to balance our budget. We're not recommending the use of general funds just to the fiscal challenges of the city. So we would like to look at pursuing diversification of revenues
You mean you're not recommending additional cuts beyond what you already have?
Correct, beyond what was presented. Yep. If we go deeper into the organization, we would lose housing support for families that need it, and we have a great demand. And I can...
Doug, so going back to the diversification of revenues, then, are you looking at some of the options that have been used in other parts of the country that you just outlined? I'm assuming that you'd like to go that route?
Yes, we would, yes. The areas that are available to us right now within our operation are looking at owning versus leasing, or development of mixed-income units. Whether we're the developer or we partner with a nonprofit, and they're the developer, but we're the owner-manager of the property.
I'd like to look over here. You guys have any questions?
I do. Going back to some of the stuff you talked about initially, you gave the three stories of people kind of upward mobility, moving out of the voucher program. What percentage of our population in the housing has the potential for upward mobility? I know there's disabled, elderly, things along those lines, but what percentage has the potential to move upward?
Currently, within our program, I would say probably 10% to 20% of our population would have that ability.
Okay. And of that 10% to 20%, do we have a life cycle of how long they stay on vouchers? Is there any requirement after X period of time that there's progress, or is the voucher kind of just in place as long as they need it?
The voucher's in place as long as they need it. However, as we work through their goals and they become more economically self-sufficient, once they reach the point where their income generates, where we do not provide any assistance, after six months, then they're exited from the program.
Okay. But there's no...
There's no length of stay, there's not a 10-year commitment, after 10 years, you get kicked off the program if you haven't reached self-sufficiency.
And that's set by HUD. We aren't allowed to affect those guidelines. Okay. I guess, from my standpoint, I mean, everything seems to indicate that we need to increase our housing. We've got a 5,000-person family waiting list. It sounds like we've got some capacity for vouchers to grow so that we can have additional revenue to supplant it. But at the same time, my accounting mind, Bob's accounting mind, is saying every time we add housing, we've got more administrative costs, and we're not funding the administrative costs that we have. And so we're trying to find a way to grow our program, even as we're losing money per unit that we add. So I'm not sure what the right answer is, but it seems like increasing only increases the problem moving forward from an accounting perspective. I mean, I understand the need for the housing, but my accounting hat says that the more housing we add, the bigger, we're just trying to dig ourselves out by going down. So that's my observa, I mean, is that a fair observation?
Yeah, well, the only, I guess, counterpoint to that is within the Section 8 program, because again, our revenue is derived by the number of units that we lease. So with the request to HUD to spend that 1.6 million to issue another 308 vouchers, that will generate about $186,000 in administrative fees. And by adding one staff person to handle that capacity, the expense ledger would go up about $72,000 salary and benefits. So there is a net gain in the Section 8 administrative program if we get that funding approved, because of the, when those units get leased, the revenue it generates, and the fact that we can handle 450 families per case manager, there's some benefit there. But the public housing side's a little bit more tricky.
But aren't they only supporting this up to 80%? So you're still a 20% loss, so to speak?
Yes.
And so I think that's...
Again, yeah, and I guess I'm looking at cash on cash. If you look at cash on cash, 308 vouchers fully leased generates $186,000 in Section 8 administrative fees, based on HUD's formula, at 80% proration. Our ability to manage that would require us to add one more staff person, which is less than the revenues that would come in, so...
But I think, Doug, the short answer is, on a long-term basis, Bob's right. I mean, you're, every time you, with that 80% factor, every time you add an expense, you're actually increasing the amount you need to subsidize the program. So that's the long-term answer. You have some short-term effects that you're talking about, but long-term-wise, it's a losing proposition going forward.
So I think your approach here, pursue diversification of revenue streams, that's about the only way you're going to get out of this deficit-type situation.
Rick?
Well, I just wanted to sort of amplify where Mr. Mahaffey just landed it. And the mayor's pointed out, I think, pretty eloquently, that the need here is very great, and we're clearly not in a position that we can allocate general fund dollars to this activity, but to actually cut the program by reducing the amount of assistance that we provide would have a really devastating impact on a lot of people and on the community generally. So the diversified revenue is really what you need to be thinking about if you're going to sustain the program. I think what we're looking for from the council today is whether we should move in that direction, and if so, what general kinds of directions do you want us to pursue. Doug has outlined several of these from some other cities, and it just seems to me that it's a really critical issue that we devote as much attention to this as we can. And I just wanted to say, I think there's a couple other entities out there that might be able to shed some light on this. You have done some great work. Several of you sit on the Homeless Coordinating Council that has looked at the homelessness issue. But if you really think about it, these issues are linked in a lot of ways, in terms of the number of people that end up homeless, maybe folks that can't be assisted through this program. So it seems to me that that particular board, or at least that approach, where you've got elected officials from across the community, not only the city, but the county, and then you have some business leadership on it, that forum is a pretty constructive way to think about addressing this issue. And it seems to me this issue has gotten to the point that we're not going to fix this with little tinkers here and there. This requires some heavy lift if we're really going to figure out a way to sustain it on a long-term basis. The ideas of using grant funds is purely stopgap. You've got to find solutions where the revenue streams are ongoing and reasonably permanent. And I think that's what Doug is trying to get us to focus on. But frankly, we need your direction as to whether or not we should pursue that, and if so, how aggressively. And then my suggestion is that you might want to think about trying to apply some higher-level muscle to this issue. That's my comment about the Homeless Coordinating Council, or an entity like that, to help us in terms of looking at and evaluating different options. So, critical issue for us.
Chris Coleman?
I don't want to drag this out, but I do have just a couple big observations. Then I want to get to where Rick was, because I do have a little response to your comment. I'm a little interested, and this isn't anything you can answer right now, but what has the impact been for Section 8 on our neighborhoods? I mean, we can track where these vouchers are being used. And I'm interested in, you know, what kind of condition are the houses in? What is the, you know, what's the assessment been of these properties? How many properties, I mean, we have thousands of units that are filled that wouldn't be paying property taxes, because these are private ownership that, you know, I mean, this program has a, I mean, it's, these houses may be empty if it wasn't for this program providing a housing opportunity, which sustains our neighborhood, I think. And I'm also wondering if sometime you could tell us how many of these vouchers are used in the city of Des Moines, or spread out around the metro area? Because I think they can take them wherever they want, can't they?
Yeah. And actually, we do have that. 80% of the Section 8 vouchers are in the corporate city limits, and 20% are outside the city of Des Moines, but within Polk County, which is our jurisdiction for the Section 8 program.
What's the number of Section 8 vouchers?
3,500.
Well, 3,100 is what we have issued. We're allowed to expand up to 3,389, and we're trying to get that additional allotment issued. As I look at this page, and now reflecting back on what the manager said, one of the things that strikes me is that as a community, whether it's from churches or private sources or corporate foundations, we're spending a lot of money to take care of homeless or near-homeless people. And the mayor asked earlier, are the, you know, how many of them move from homelessness to here? I'm not sure how many move from homelessness to here, but I can only imagine how many would move from here to homelessness if the vouchers ended. It would be an overwhelming problem in our community, and that's why I hope that the Homeless Coordinating Council can get involved. But the fact is, as a community, we spend all kinds of money on some services, some of which is 100% funded by local sources. You know, here, whether it's the corporate community or through revenue that you could create, the return on investment for us locally in making up that 20% is astronomical. This is the biggest program by far. It's probably, it's probably triple alone every other program that serves homeless issues combined, in terms of the number of units and the numbers of families that we serve. And it's for, right now, a very modest, if anything, local contribution. And so I think identifying ways to make unique local contributions, diversifying revenue, is exactly what we should do. You mentioned that there's elected leaders from around the metro area on the Homeless Coordinating Council. There's also the United Way and the Community Foundation, the Faith Community, corporate entities, the Partnership. I think it's a really good place to kind of think about that. And as you go to pursue waivers or approval or applications... the mayor, has to get in front of the right audiences and support it. I think it's really important, like today we learned that you have an application in front of Iowa Finance Authority. Those are things that come up to us all the time as we're out and about, and it's really good for us to know those things. So I think we do have an opportunity for three, especially if we circle the right people around it.
Christine?
I would just like to add to what Chris is saying here, because we've talked about it, the federal government, and you've got IFA at the state level, but I believe that at the state level, there are a lot of other opportunities for us as well, and we, I would encourage us to work to get all of the proper people together to just have a discussion about this. Let them know what the impact is, what we're doing, and it's, I'm thinking, you know, I made a note here, real estate transfer taxes, and we're talking about diversifying revenues. You've got the money that's been awarded for foreclosed properties, significant dollars. They've got a pool up there that they're looking at different programs or applications, how to reinvest those dollars back into the community. I believe that some of what you're doing and some of the different options would be perfect for some of that. It's just a matter of sitting down with the right people and educating them, and I know you're going to talk about legislative. This needs to be part of the legislative discussion.
Yeah.
Doug, anything else?
No, we're, I appreciate your time and your interest and your comments.
Very, very good.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, comments?
Mayor and councilmembers, this is really more of a reminder than anything else, but at these workshops going forward, our intention is to bring back to you periodically, now that the session's about to begin, with updates on different issues that have come forward and are being discussed in the legislature, and talk about it here in these public sessions. I would also say that we have asked for suggestions from our staff, various departments, on different ideas or needs that they have for legislation. I'll be bringing that back to you. And I would say, at the same time, those of you who have particular ideas or suggestions, we just talked about one, which I think ought to be on the list, but if any of you have particular things that you think we need to be pursuing with the legislature, please let us know, and we'll try to work that into it. We do have a very strong team of people that work on it from a staff perspective, not the least of which is our city attorney, Jeff Lester, and his staff do great work in terms of analyzing all the different pieces of legislation that occur, and I assume, Jeff, that work will continue on, and you'll be one of the primary reporters back here. Candy Ryan-Dowell in my office, Scott Sanders, and others throughout the organization are involved as we go forward. And of course, you have Mark and Jerry working as well. So look forward to this. I just wanted to sort of remind you, that was the process we established, and we will be coming back to you at these workshops periodically during the session with updated information and seeking your guidance on particular issues that arise. There's also, I think, opportunity over the next few weeks in particular for councilmembers individually to reach out to their legislators and just let them know of their interest and the city's desires with regard to legislation. Obviously, there's some major pieces of legislation that will be debated again this session, particularly in terms of those things that impact city finances that we'll be looking at and watching very carefully. So, Mayor, that's really all I wanted to say, is just to announce that we're at the beginning of it. We'll be coming back to you with reports and ideas and suggestions that any of you have with regard to specific legislative alternatives, please let us know.
Christine?
Could I just add? Last year, we had a committee of citizens for grassroots impact, and I would just like to have some thought, discussion as to how that worked last year. Is that something that we want? We implemented that a little bit later in the session, but I know that I've had opportunity to discuss with some citizens that they felt that was beneficial, so if we could have some discussion at the next workshop on that, maybe what recommendations would be.
Sure. Happy to do that.
Skip, Bob? All right. Let's quickly open up for any public comment. Anybody just willing to speak, have something clarified, add something for the good of the order? Seeing none at this moment, this meeting is adjourned, and for those of you that are so excited, come on back tonight.